Good evening. Call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 12, 2023, to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence for anything that's heavy on your head or heavy on your heart. Please stand and join as Alderman Dunn leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, would you please call the roll?
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Condon?
Cornette?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
And President, Your Honor?
Thank you very much. Good evening. As we began the City Council meeting, I would like to welcome you to all of those in attendance and folks viewing the meeting at your computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Keep in mind that you talk to the council and you also are sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters, with viewers throughout the region. We're happy that you're participating in city government. We ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we would ask that you turn off your cellphones or other electronic handheld devices so they don't interfere with anyone who may wish to speak. If you want to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you're encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will have an opportunity to address the City Council on items not on the agenda under the public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur toward the end. And a reminder, when addressing the council, you'll be asked to step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the mayor, speak to the council as a body and not to any single member, and you are asked to limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. Will an Alderman move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for June 28, 2023?
Second?
Having motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Gleason, is there a city administrator update tonight?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll ask an Alderman to approve the report of the Committee of the Hall for July 5, 2023.
Move the report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And that vote passes. We do have four appointments this evening. I will read all of them and then ask for approval. First, the Historic Preservation Commission, Christine Powers, that's a reappointment. The Housing Commission, Matt Whissing, that is also a reappointment. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Christopher Meyer, that is a reappointment. And Zoning Board of Adjustment is Bridget Boyd-Carlson, and that is also a reappointment. I will accept a motion to approve these appointments.
Move the appointments.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign. Those appointments are approved, and I want to thank everybody, these folks, as well as everybody who serves on our commissions, and just make a little pitch. We are always looking for new people to serve on commissions. We often have openings. We have commissions that cover many different topics, and so if you're interested, please get in touch, and we'll let you know how we can follow up. So now petitions and communications from council members. Is there anyone that has something tonight? Alderman Dick?
Thank you, Your Honor. I might be late to the party on this, but I stumbled on the Libraries app that has finally been, I know they've been working on building up a new one, and I just wanted to remind everyone that our library is amazing, and now our library app is amazing, and that also the library does have passes to things like the Putnam, I think the Figgy is free right now, but things like that. And you are able to put those on hold using your library card and your library app that is available on all smartphones. So just as something that I got reminded of today, I wanted to remind everybody here to make sure to take use of that resource. Thank you.
Alderman Cornet?
Thank you. I'd just like to let everybody know that the Seventh and Eighth Ward are having their ward meetings tomorrow jointly at Eastern Library, 6:00. Everybody's invited, come on by. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to put in a plug for the downtown Davenport walking tours that are back this summer. I think there were four or five of them last summer and fall. It is a partnership between the Davenport Public Library and Allen Shapley. It's very fun and informative. It's about a 90-minute walk around the downtown, and registration is limited to 20 people. You meet at the Main Street Library, and then she has a nice program tour where she'll take you throughout the downtown to look at the different architectural features of our downtown, which are pretty significant. So if you are interested in that, you can find that at the Heart of Downtown Davenport Architectural Styles and Stories, or you can go to the Libraries Facebook page or website. The next one is this coming Saturday, July 15, from 10:00 to 11:30. And then there's also one scheduled Monday, August 7, in the evening from 6:00 to 7:30. Thank you.
And Alderman Lee?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to let you know, Director, that I was down at Vets Memorial Park today, and we had apparently very heavy rain, and a lot of the erosion control has failed. And the other thing I wanted to talk about, and this goes back to what I talked about last week. I did not quote what the First Amendment says, but it says, "In relation to the right for free speech," quote, "Congress shall make no law respecting the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. One does not need to be a lawyer to understand and talk about the clear language of the amendment and its associated longstanding Supreme Court interpretations." I will not repeat my statement from last week's meeting regarding First Amendment's rights, but I will repeat about the city's stated policy of not live streaming or recording public comment. And this is what I said last week. "The city implements this mistaken policy, then shame on us. City council remains silent, then again, shame on us. Protect the constitutional free speech and face and act on issues raised by our active and informed citizenry practicing their constitutional rights." Mizat said in the paper that the timeline for implementation of these changes was still to be determined. The right and constitutional answer, in my opinion, is never. I also believe that the mayor's statement last week about a policy regarding defamation is arbitrary and capricious, as we are not provided with a definition of what types of speech are defamatory, and is apparently up to the mayor to define or interpret it on the spot and unilaterally. Defamation exists only if statements are knowingly false. Last week, public comment was preemptively cut from the livestream with the following statement. "This portion of the meeting will not be available for viewing, as it contains material that is defamatory in nature." This is before we even heard a comment. How can the city administration define or interpret defamation if the speakers have not even spoken? I agree the mayor has the authority and should declare rules of decorum, and also declare speakers out of order if they are indeed out of order. However, to arbitrarily and capriciously declare our statements are fact versus opinion as required in defamation cases is not his or our role. To adequately do our job, we and Davenport citizens must be fully informed on what our constituents and their fellow Davenporters have to say, whether they attend the meeting in person or watch it online. It is our duty to represent them, and we cannot properly do so if they are not allowed to speak and discuss what the grievances are without fear of having their comments shut down under defamation, as unilaterally identified. I believe that not allowing concerned citizens the ability to fully speak at these public comments sections of our agenda is a grave mistake, as we would not be able to hear their opinions and grievances. And in turn, how can we ever adequately represent their interests? I believe that we should protect our citizens and constituents' First Amendment rights, freedom of speech, and the right to petition the government for a redress of grievances without fear of having a unilateral threat or decision about speech being defamatory. Thank you.
And I have, I don't see anybody else, I have something to add. Their Third Ward meeting for July is Monday, July 17. We're back on Monday, which is where we typically are, 6:30 here in council chambers. We will be talking about road construction projects in the Third Ward this upcoming year, and there are a lot of them, which is exciting, but also makes it interesting to get around. And we're also going to be hearing about a new downtown neighborhood group that is forming that's sort of exciting as well. So that's Monday night, July 17, at 6:30 here in council chambers. And I don't see anyone else, so let's move on to, there's no one else, okay. Let's move on to the approval of the individual items on the discussion agenda, and there are four of those tonight. The first is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of city-owned property located in the 300 block of West 16th Street to Davis Priority Properties LLC. First, is there any public with comment? Seeing, hearing no one, seeing no one here, will an Alderman move the resolution?
So moved.
And is there any discussion from Alderman? Alderman Jobchin?
I apologize if I was going to steal Alderman Gripp's thunder. We received some information from Director Berger, and I couldn't see if he was here. I didn't know if he was here. Will I comment? Can I have Director Berger just come up to the podium, please? So first, I just want to say thanks for your diligence on this, and thanks for sharing some information. I was just wondering for the public if you could share kind of what you presented to the council and what sounds good to me.
Sure. Bruce Burger, Community and Economic Development. So we, after last week's discussion with a couple of interested parties in the property, we just took a closer look at the, really, the planning principles behind what is one preferable to the other in terms of city code. And so the thing that we landed on was the single-family house, a detached house, should have two parking spaces if a new one were being built by today's standards. And so the petitioner has a single-family house that does not have two off-street parking spaces. Solving this property to that party would accomplish that. And then the other interested party is a business on the other side of the alley. And so we did look at if that party were to acquire the property, then there would be a parking space that's primary use would be separated from the business, and that's a standalone lot, which again, from a planning perspective, would state that it's a nonconformance. So that was really the only information that we provided.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Kelly?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to table this, so.
And do you want to tell us a little bit about why you'd like to do it?
Because I've spoken to both parties, and I believe I can come up with an agreeance with what they have going on. So that's why I'm making the motion, and I'm just leaving it at that.
And this is Fifth Ward, this is the Fifth Ward property, okay. So we can make that motion, is that correct?
Is that a, are you making the motion now?
I'm making a motion for one cycle to table this.
Could I have, okay. Voice plate or?
Voice plate.
Voice plate, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Oh, okay, okay. So I believe that motion will pass us, so it'll be table for one cycle. And I hope the parties can work together and come up with a good solution for everybody. All right. The next is a resolution approving an engineering services contract with Socotek Engineering Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Is there any public with comment? Name in an word, please.
My name is David Ezra Sidran. I have been a resident of the Third Ward for over 30 years. As you know, this contract with Socotek was kept from the public for as long as possible and became available only through a Freedom of Information request. I got a copy of it, and I know the Quad City Times got a copy of it. In the letter, I guess a memorandum of agreement, or whatever you want to call it, that was signed by the Managing Director of Socotek and by the City Administrator of the City of Davenport, the Managing Director of Socotek made a point of pointing out that they had no idea what they were being hired to do. There was no work order, there was no instructions, there was nothing. My question is, is there a work order? Is there, does Socotek have a list of things it's going to be hired to do? Do we have to file another Freedom of Information request to get our hands on these communications? In fact, I have already filed another Freedom of Information request that Mr. Warner has not complied with for all communications between him and Socotek. What's going on with Socotek? Simple question, you're going to pay them $150,000. What are they going to do for the $150,000? If anybody can answer that question, I would like to hear the answer. Thank you very much.
Anybody else who would like to speak on this? Will an Alderman move the resolution, please? And discussion? Any discussion on this? Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you. I was wondering if either our Assistant City Administrator or Corporate Counsel could answer this question. In the supporting documents online, there is that document from Socotek which reads that a written proposal would be provided in the coming days or when client requests. Do we have that written proposal yet?
We are finalizing that, but I can answer the bigger question, which is, we had active contract management going on, and our engineers and our fire marshal and other folks involved in this were having discussions with both White Birch and Socotek, and we know precisely what they were doing, and they did what we were asking them to do, and nothing more. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much for that answer. With that, I hear about needing to be fluid in the situation, understanding there was, you know, a tragedy that happened. I appreciate city administration actively managing the contract. I think we're at a point now, though, unfortunately, where we're anticipating a potential to exceed the emergency spending limit. So therefore, obviously, this resolution is coming before the council. Now, as a council member, I do think it is, you know, part of my diligence to know, all right, what am I approving? I get it, right? I trust, I trust our city staff, but kind of as a point of order for me, I'm willing to vote no tonight on this, because I think we should have our ducks in order, right? I think we should have that paperwork. If I'm being asked to vote on this service contract, then, you know, we're now over a month, correct, since the incident occurred? I got nothing against Socotek. You know, they come highly recommended, but I would believe that by this point in time, you know, we should have that. I may be in the minority opinion tonight, but that's kind of where I'm landing. Thank you.
Alderman Lee?
Thank you. I'm in support of Alderman Jobchin. The city, looking at the contracts you provided me this morning that were issued under the emergency operations city code, we did have a contract and amendment to that contract and another contract that were issued during the same time period as this one with Socotek that did include statements of services. I've been doing contracting for 30 years, and it doesn't take that long. We wouldn't have contractors sitting idle while we developed a statement of work. And again, it's been a month. We should have had that a long time ago. And since we're being asked to approve an engineering services contract that has nothing but hourly rates that are up to $490 an hour, this could be unexpectedly expensive without a clear statement of services to be performed that have been performed and that will be performed in the services. I'm also thinking that with this inconsistency in our contracting approach, where for some of them we have statements of services and some of them we don't, that I will also vote no tonight. Again, this has nothing to do with the companies, it has nothing to do with the people who work for those companies. It's my concern is with the contracting that we have entered into during this period of emergency operations. I also have a question. Could someone please explain to me, since the contract for White Birch Group, which does not have a statement of services, and Socotek, or SEI, which also does not have a statement of services, would you please explain to me how their services will complement each other, how they differ from each other, and how they will not duplicate each other, since they're both very expensive contracts?
Well, I can answer it to the extent that the Socotek piece is on your agenda tonight. I don't want to talk about something that's not on your agenda. But Socotek is providing the licensed professional engineering services to complement the skillset of the primary person behind White Birch Group. So in order to, what, give us a fully complete causes and origins report, these professional engineering services were deemed required.
So they'll be supplementing each other, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And not duplicating?
They're working together.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Tease?
Thank you, Your Honor. Take a little stab at this, just to understand some of it. I think it's important that we all understand that a lot of agencies and groups, when this tragedy happened, you know, was a part of what the city was doing. As an Alderman, you know, we got updated as it was coming to us and as it was available to the public or to us, then it would go out to the public. You know, I think I hear, you know, for the past couple of weeks, like, you know, I want the public to understand, we're not keeping things from you guys. You know, as Tom, as our counselor, city attorney, said, please understand, a report isn't even done yet. We, as a council, haven't even received the reports of what was caused or how it was caused. So once we receive that to know exactly, believe me, as a council member, you know, we'll get it out to you in that. So I just, like I said, I want to make sure that we pay our bills. I want to make sure that, you know, my council members understand this is not to exceed $150,000. So if it only costs $90,000, that's all we're going to pay is $90,000. I too have a concern, I don't want it to be an unwritten amount of money, and I want it to be at the tax, you know, that we're protecting and being conservative with the taxpayers' dollars, because that's important, you know. So like I said, I hope we can get a resolution of this, and, you know, like I said, ultimately, we can all heal from this and get past this, because it is a tragedy, and it's time that we heal. Thank you.
Alderman Cornet?
I worked for the government for a bunch of years, and I worked in contracting as a contracting officer's representative. And I don't understand either how, why it's taking so long to get a scope of work. I mean, you know, I just don't, I think I'm going to have to stick with the famous statement by Ronald Reagan, "Trust but verify." So I'm going to have to go with a no on this for tonight as well.
Alderman Dickman?
Thank you, Corporate Counsel. The purpose of this is to kind of make sure that we know exactly what did happen so that we can have further regulations and use that in lawsuits to make sure that the landlord and building owner are held accountable for the failings that happened. So I will be voting yes, because I want to make sure we fully understand exactly what happened and exactly what got missed so that it never gets missed again. So I will be very strongly voting yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Okay, so welcome to Sweet Valley High. I guess I'll jump in here and say, too, why I'm going to vote no, because I feel like there's a lot of information that's being shared across this table that a lot of us aren't getting. So with that being said, do we have to go through this? You know what I mean? If we could all be given the same information and the same emails or be updated at the same time, we wouldn't even be having to go through this.
Alderman Lee, I will come back. I'm sorry, I'm going to go to Alderman Gripp, and I'm going to speak, and then I'll come to you, since you've spoken already. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor, Corporate Counsel. What would be the ramifications of voting this down?
Well, we'd have to pay Socotek for their services rendered thus far. The other ramification, as Alderman Dickman pointed out, the whole purpose at this point is to get a causes and origins report completed. So if we don't do it, that's put on hold, that effort is scuttled, and may have to start anew.
Have they, they're along in their work but have not completed it?
It is not completed yet. They're actively working on it, though.
So I would assume if we voted this down, they would stop work?
Correct.
And then potentially withhold any of the findings that they have until we paid for their services?
Well, it's not even at a point where they would release findings.
Correct, yeah.
So we would have nothing.
Okay.
So we'd know nothing about the causes or origin.
So we would have paid $55,000, received no product, but then would still need to figure out how to complete the investigation? Potentially, thank you.
And I'm going to take a round before I go back to Alderman Lee, since I haven't spoken. Again, ordinarily, when we have contracts, they are, first of all, they are, there is time to do them. They are not in an emergency situation, correct?
Correct.
And do, when we're working on contracts, this is an extraordinary situation, it was an emergency, and we know that contracts, and I'll defer to Ms. Gleason, can take months to do. Is that typical, contracts can take months to get everything signed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we don't even, we haven't even had a month with this company yet. And do we release contracts before they have all the signatures typically? The scope of work?
If it's in, if it's in final form, we will release it, but typically, we'd rather have it fully executed, meaning fully signed.
Correct. So that would be a reason why it wouldn't be released yet, because it's not fully signed?
Yes.
That's not what I'm talking about. Alderman Lee, please put that down. Okay. So again, I would say to my fellow counselors, it is, this is an emergency situation. This is a scope of work that takes time. It takes, it can take, now, this isn't, this isn't a huge road project, for sure, it's not millions of dollars, but it is, it does take time, it takes signatures. We do not release contracts that aren't buttoned up, because that's, I think, been a problem, you know, has been, the city has had some problems with that in the past, not recently. So again, this is a situation that time is very different. Time is compressed for this, and so I feel that if we don't move forward, that we have, we probably have, between the two folks, we have, you know, a man with probably the best reputation at dealing with this in the country, we're not dealing with that contract tonight, but he is working in concert with this group. So I would find it a very sad feeling if this council could not be in agreement on this. Alderman Lee?
Sure. Yes. Yes, it will be. The other thing about this is it says in our agenda not to exceed $150,000, but I do not see that in the work authorization agreement. And I would assume that a work authorization agreement that's signed by the city administrator would override what's on an agenda. So is that true?
Well, what I can say about the amount is the actual amount that we believe it's going to be, the current estimate, is 95,000. Since it was close to 100,000, we're being conservative again, and that pays off when we're conservative. So we put it at 150,000, but right now it's 95.
Okay. I, since it's been a month, really... Okay, I, since it's been a month, really what we need is a statement of work, so we know what we're getting, I agree. We need the report, we've got, it sounds like a very good company, I agree with that. I move to table this for one cycle, this approval of the contract, until, and in that time, we'll be able to get that statement of work that the current work authorization agreement says that they have not provided. And since we've been working on it, and since Director Merritt has said in a, in a report, that effective July 6th, the need for additional emergency purchases under this provision-
Would you, could you please, if you, are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to table this, thank you. To table this for one cycle, until we can get that statement of work and get a fully executable contract.
Okay.
McGinnis?
No.
Dunn?
No.
Grip?
No.
Dickman?
No.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Cornet? Ortiz?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Looks like five nos and four yeses, Your Honor.
All right. And Alderman Jobchin, you had, and one more?
Thank you for just, you know, take a second bite at the apple.
No problem.
So then, corporate counsel, Warner. So if this resolution is coming before us just for an act of conservative budgeting and caution with the belief of the cost actually being under the amounts allowed within emergency spending, then theoretically, if we have this agreement, you know, a handshake agreement with SEI, couldn't work continue up until that point, under the emergency spending provisions?
If it's defeated tonight, we would follow that direction, and we would stop the work.
Then why would we stop the work if we're continuing under this initial assumption that we're, I mean, we engage into this under the provisions of emergency spending, correct?
Correct. So, to answer your question, the resolution is to approve this agreement, and if the council defeats the approval of the agreement, staff's not going to move forward. That would, that being defiance of the council's will, because they've not approved the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Grip. And one, everybody gets, some people have had second pass, others can have a second pass, and then we go. So, okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to appeal to my colleagues and say, please, let's not vote this down and stop the investigation of what happened. I mean, what have we been asking for, for five weeks? We need to figure out why this happened, okay? This company has a great reputation nationally, this is what they do, okay? We, they were recommended to us, this was sought out, okay? They have started the work, okay? We owe them money, there is no reason to stop this at this point, okay? Let's let the experts do their work, okay? The financial liability is $150,000, okay? That is what the liability, corporate counsel is saying, very likely, that is closer to $100,000, but you know what your liability is. Last week, a couple of people on the dais used the term "open checkbook." That, this is not that, okay? This is a capped dollar amount of $150,000. They've already earned some of that money through work that they've done. They are reputable, there is no reason to vote this down. And I would just caution you, please don't do that. Let's approve this, and let's let them continue their work and tell us what happened. Thank you.
Alderman Dickman?
I guess I'm seconding my colleague's comments, that if we stop this, if we shut this down, it is very plausible that we will never fully understand what happened. And then we cannot make progress to not have it happen again, if we don't know what went wrong. So if we vote this down tonight, over $150,000, we've already spent 50 of it, so it's really only $100,000, which in a city budget, is not the most consequential thing. The lives were already lost. The only way that we can give honest answers to the families is to say, we know what happened, and here's what we're going to do, so that it never happens again. And if we don't know what happened, we cannot answer that question, and we cannot make fixes. So, thank you.
Not seeing nobody else, would you please call the roll?
Grip?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin? Do you want me to come back to you?
Yes.
Cornet?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
It looks like seven yeses and two nos, Your Honor?
All right, then that resolution passes. The next resolution on our agenda is a resolution approving the payment to the Waste Commission of Scott County of Davenport Island for tipping fees in the amount not to exceed $500,000. Is there anyone public with comment? And you do have three minutes tonight, which you guys are doing a great job of.
Yes, my name is David Ezra Sidram. I've been a third ward resident for over 30 years. Over the last few weeks, I've seen the city council move millions of dollars. I literally don't know how many millions at this point. Remember, the old Senator jerks in line, a million here, a million there, eventually you're talking real money. The question is, where is the money coming from? And I can't get a straight answer, and I don't think anybody here knows. In basic double-entry bookkeeping, which is what you guys use, if you're going to pay Scott County a half a million bucks that you hadn't budgeted last year, you got to take a half a million bucks from some other budget. Simple as that. You've already moved three and a half million, or three million, I don't know, there was 1.2, 1.4 million for Zezner Company to do the deconstruction, and then there's the Socotech, and then there's this, and then there's the money for the marketing company that was supposed to restore your reputation.
Mr. Sidram, could you stay focused on the tipping fees?
The question I'm asking is, where does the money come from? What budget line are you taking three and a half million dollars out of to put into this budget, so that you can afford half a million dollar tipping fee? Where is the money coming from? I know where it's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Ron Twiter, Davenport Rock Island. My question is, I understand not to exceed half a million, but how much per load are we paying the Scott County Waste Authority? I know it's special because of asbestos, and it's in a different part of the landfill. I'd like to know how much we're paying for each tipping we do down there. That's my question. I hope to get an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? So, could I have a motion to move this resolution? Any discussion? Alderman Lee?
Thank you very much. No fee for money was granted based on the governor's request, from either one of her requests. So, I want to know, and I think that was reasonable, this was not a natural disaster.
What actions?
Has the city taken, do I have my, yeah.
I think you're fine.
What actions has the city taken to obtain reimbursement for Mr. Wold for demolition, landfill tipping fees, and other past, present, and future costs currently being borne by Davenport taxpayers related to the partial collapse of Mr. Wold's building at 324 Main Street?
So, it was widely reported that we filed a municipal infraction to help stake out a position that we're, that we are coming after him for these dollars. We can't fully go after that, till we know exactly what the damage is. So this is a question that is being asked midstream. So we need more data before we actually do that.
But we are actively taking action.
Our goal, yes, is to pursue Mr. Wold, or his companies. If we can pierce, if we can pierce the veil of the companies, we will try to pierce the veil of the companies.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Alderman Dunn?
Thank you. Director Gleason, I believe we have a contract with the Waste Commission that we're locked into a certain price per ton. I don't expect that answer, but-
Correct, we do. And it is at the rackum rate, which is asbestos. And just for context, the load, the per day fees have been between 18 and 30,000 per day. Currently, as of yesterday, we were at approximately 340,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I have a question, if nobody else does. Could you, if you're able to do this tonight, Attorney Warner, could you talk about the question of, how is this being paid for? And the city's fiscal policies?
Well, in general terms, I can speak about it. So, we're, this is, these are costs that were incurred in the last fiscal year. We're still in the process of closing out that fiscal year. So, because we use, the council and the staff engage in fiscally conservative practices, because we exercise budget discipline, there is generally extra money available. We've all experienced it, anybody who's been on council for some time has experienced that. So we are quite confident that the money is there. But it's really due to the course charted by the elected officials, you all, and executed by the staff, which is to be, to exercise budget discipline and fiscal constraint. And I'd like to add one other thing, if I could. Tipping fees can be a bit of a misnomer, because when people hear the term tipping, they almost think of it as a, in a day-to-day life, as a gratuity, like you tip your waiter, or waitress, or, right? But that's not what this is. These are the, just the cost per load that the landfill charges us.
If you could answer one more question about, again, we've gone through this at, at this dais, at this subject, but I'd like, if we could go through it again, and if you would talk about the timetable and what it takes to close out a fiscal year for a, for a community the size of ours, and-
I can give you an estimate. I believe we close it out sometime in August. So it takes a while to account for everything that comes through, and get it in the right fiscal year.
Okay. And we have to do that very carefully, correct?
We have to do it very carefully. Our auditors come in and audit us every year, and we always do excellent with our audits.
Okay, thank you. Could we have called the roll on this, please? Sorry.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
All right, thank you. We have one more motion on our agenda tonight, and that is the approval of a beer and liquor license application. This was a temporary outdoor area, this was Ward 3. This is for the Damview Inn, 410 East Second Street. Temporary extended outdoor area, July 28th through 30th. License type, Class C liquor, on premises. And before we, well, I'll ask for any public with comment first. All right? Would an alderman move the motion? Okay. So we have a motion in the second. And as this was, before we vote, as this was my request to put this on discussion, there were, there were some issues, I want to report back to council, there were some issues in that area several weeks ago, unfortunate issues. We did have a meeting with the police, with the mayor, with Attorney Warner, right after our meeting last week, so it was very quick. I think it was, we had it Thursday or Friday, they came in quickly, all of the owners came in. I'm very, of course, very sorry about what happened there, but I'm very pleased to say they moved very swiftly, and had begun moving very swiftly to address any sort of environmental issues that were there, that were tending to the problem. They had done textbook things that should be done when something like this happens. This was not their regular clientele, but they moved, they have an emerg, they have a fence, a temporary fence, planning to put an emergency, a permanent one. They have lighting, and planning to have a better lighting plan. They had taken many things, they had hired off-duty police officers on their own. They had done every single thing that, when, you know, when bars face a situation like this, that bars need to do. And so I had, I have to applaud them for that. So my, I am, my concerns are rested over this, over this approval. But I wanted to let you know, and I need to give them, I need to give the, the Damview props, because they really, they did what every bar should do in a situation like this. So hopefully that will help. So, having said that, is there any other, any discussion from aldermen? Don't see anyone. Okay, could you call the roll, please, Brian?
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
All right. Let's see, let me, have to find the blue, sorry. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions?
We're on the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. So, now, there's a, need a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? All right. Call the roll? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Alderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We need to pull item number 10.
All right.
That is the rehabilitation project for 228 South Hancock. And the original amount that was posted, that was on our agenda, included the scope of redoing the garage, which that's not part of the scope. So we need to reduce that amount, and I'm going to make, I would like to make a motion to amend, to change the not-to-exceed price to 341,498.54.
So motion in the second? Do we need a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that amendment passes. So now, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Yes, will you put that item back on consent?
Yes, yes, okay, so-
Item number 10.
Yeah, so I need a motion, I will make a motion to put it back, item 10 back on the agenda. Sorry.
You don't need a motion. Now we're back to the roll call vote on the main motion, which is to approve all items on the consent agenda.
All right, so roll call vote.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor?
All right, thank you very much. Now, moving on. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, and motions? None? All right. So we are moving to public with business. I just want to make a reminder again, and I want to thank everyone tonight for, here in the chamber, comments are to be addressed to the council as a whole. As we've been, as we've said in past weeks, a speaker makes remarks that are defamatory or comments that are personal attacks will forfeit their ability to continue to speak, and we don't want that to happen. But you will be directed to stop if that does happen. But we don't want that, we want, we're here to listen. And so, you will have three minutes. And so, I would ask us here, public with comment. Come forward, name, ward, or city.
Ron Twiter, Davenport Rock Island. I've come many times before this council. But having the time dropped to three minutes and not broadcast is unacceptable, in our view. You invite the public to speak at the beginning of the meeting, and here you were not able to share with our fellow Davenport citizens. Amazing. Clear and transparency. Yes, there's been a lot of heated discussions. Yes, there's been a lot of tempers. Three people died. We lost the most precious gift to the city, three of its citizens. You know, I've spoke and spoke and spoke up here for different things, but this right here, man, we need to get our five minutes back. We need to get back broadcasting. We have to be able to share our First Amendment rights. But like anything in this council, it's up to you. You were voted as our representatives, and we appreciate you guys running. You guys were our voices. We, we had a one-way where, you know, thousands said no, and we got turned out. Well, we may not be thousands, but we're the ones that take the time to come to speak to you. All we're asking is for our time, for you guys to listen, not turn your heads, not nod, not give me dirty looks or anyone else. We're here for one reason, to make Davenport a better place. I was raised that way. I was raised, no matter what you do, you make it better, period. You go camping, you leave the site better. You go walking down our pathways. Pick up a trash, make it a little better. You see someone, stop, help them, make it a little better. Well, we're asking you to make it a little better for us. And I hope in my prayers that you guys do that. And this shenanigan, this action in my book, they can take, that's fine. But our rights and our abilities and clear and transparent government is what we're looking for, folks. And I'll tell you right now, you got a lot of unhappy people out there. And I hope and pray that changes. Thank you.
My name is Katie Stewart, and I am a Davenport resident, eight. And first and foremost, I will just say, I think we know, already know what happened to that building. I think we know that the lack of care for that building, especially since they were supposed to evacuate in twenty-twenty-three. So the community knows that. I don't know if somebody's trying to cover it up or trying to cover their own butts, but there we have it. This is Brandon Colvin, Senior. Brandon Colvin, Senior, beloved father, son, brother, uncle, grandson, nephew, and cousin, and a very good friend, which he was. Brandon was fun-loving and full of life. He was intelligent and caring, with an unwavering loyalty to his family and friends. While his time on this earth was far too short, he made permanent emperors on all the lives he touched, emperors that will, will live on through the memories we hold dear and the stories we will tell in the years and decades ahead. Brandon Rokal Colvin, Senior, forty-two, of Rock Island, passed away on Saturday, June third, twenty-twenty-three, in Davenport, Iowa. I'll skip, but this other part was just for his thing. Brandon was born on November eighteenth, nineteen-eighty, in Rock Island, a son of Robert and Beverly Williams Colvin. Mr. Colvin worked as a fork truck driver for Ex-Pac Mylan. Brandon was, Brandon was well-known in the community and will be missed. Survivors include his children, Noah Peterson, Bertie Colvin, Brandon Colvin, Junior, Nishan Jones, Elijah Henderson, a grandson, Brooks Peterson, siblings Robert Hurd, Andrea Williams, Carlissa Hurd, Patrick, Ashley, Christian Neely, and a host of other family members. Brandon was preceded by his parents and grandparents, Escher and Henorita Williams, and Jewel and Johnny Mae Colvin. If people did their job before this event even took place, Brandon could be here voicing his own voice right now. And he was robbed, and he was still alive in that rubble. He heard a scream, pleading with you guys, pleading with Davenport Police, whoever would try to listen, to go through that rubble. Us as citizens would have easily went in that building and saved him, because he was alive. He heard us out there. And I know they had to have been pleading for their own lives.
Thank you. Next? Just from, that you're from.
My name's Alexis Thurman, and I'm from Ward Three. And I'm not going to keep you guys here too long with, you know, comments that have already been repeated. You guys know what's going on, you know, you know, a lot of the things that have been, you know, just the past month that have transpired, you know. I think that there is accountability to be held, but we're not quite getting to that point. And I think that's where a lot of this anger and upset comes from. But I think moving forward, we are all getting to a place of understanding and trying to get to all the same place. We all want to be on the same level. We all want to see change and impact in being, you know, a resident here of twenty-seven years. This is the only place I know, you know? So seeing something so impacting in my community, and it's still kind of not getting any type of reconciliation, it is disheartening, very disheartening. But anyways, I'm here to read on Ryan's behalf. He was fifty-one years old, a resident of Davenport, Iowa, and he passed away Sunday, May twenty-eighth. He was born December twelfth, nineteen-seventy-one, in Moline, Illinois, a son of Alan and Linda Moore-Hart Hitchcock. Ryan loved Jesus and was a strong advocate of the kingdom. He was silly at times, nonsensical, passionate, profound, and unconditionally generous. He loved music and video games. Ryan recently got into cigars and was a member of the, at the drawing room in Davenport. He recently purchased a set of golf clubs and dressed the game better than he played it. Ryan was currently employed in the IT department at Arconic as a desk-side technician. Surviving are his mother, Linda, father Alan Hitchcock, in North Carolina. He's got a brother named Doug Hitchcock, and in Coal Valley, an uncle named Scott Moore. And again, I'm not going to bore you guys with things you've already heard a million times, but I think that there's a lot of changes that need to be made in this city. And again, I'm only twenty-seven years old. I don't know a lot. But again, this is the only place I know, and to see something so impacting happen, and, you know, there's a lot of sides that are divided, but I think there is one culprit. And I think that that needs to be, you know, addressed properly, not with anger, but with peace and actual justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. Daniel Preon. Hope you all remember. Daniel Anthony, age sixty, of South Beloit, Illinois, passed away on May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. During Dan's life, he was a gentle soul and had a gypsy heart. He loved to be constantly on the go, which resulted in not having a stable job or place of residence. He also served in the Marine Corps. He was a beloved grandfather, father, and son. He was preceded in death by his parents, George and Nancy. He is survived by his only daughter, Nancy Frazza Preon, half-brother George, and half-sister Linda. His family would like to thank Mississippi Valley Cremation and Drive Burial for donating their services, because who plans for something like this? Cremation rites will be accorded, and interment with some of his ashes will take place at Rock Island National Cemetery, and the remaining ashes will stay with his daughter, Nancy Frazza, for a memorial to celebrate his life, which will be announced and take place very soon. Just to clarify, forty-five days today, not a little over a month, not thirty days, forty-five days. How sad is it that he finally felt comfortable enough to settle down, and this is what happens to him? By the way, we spent more time debating on windows for an inanimate object that is deemed a landmark than we have on his, this preventable tragedy that stole the lives of three men from their families. When will their lives be deemed as worthy as those windows, or the buildings, or the levees, or whatever? The families will never get past this, and to say the lives were already lost is heartless, cruel, and cold. Their families are sitting out here still grieving, and people are acting like this is nothing? What if it was your family in that building? You would be doing the same thing every single one of us are doing. Every single week we show up here, this is not easy to do, and I wasn't related to them. We have people wanting to come to our city through the RagBri, and they said, I hope Main Street's open, because that's one of the easiest streets to get up. And we had to share, there was a building collapse. There's still stuff sitting out there. I shared it as gently as I could if there's family out there. But we have people coming to our city from all over the place, and the same will be for the bigs. And they're going to see this tragedy, and they're going to want to know what happened. Yes, we could spend money to do that. Yes, we could do that. But those lives are worth more than any of that money at all. And I'm in the Eighth Ward, and I'm not allowed to address just one person, but I wish everybody was like the Eighth Ward Alderman, because she's been.
Next?
My name is David Esra Sidran. I have been a resident of the Third Ward for thirty years, over thirty. I taught computer science at the University of Iowa for many, many years. And every semester, on the first day of class, I would give the same lecture. And I'm going to give you the same lecture right now. It's a very short lecture. And I would say that the greatest asset you can have as a computer scientist or as a human being is the ability to say, I screwed up. Fifty times a day, if necessary, because if your computer code won't run, the first thing you have to do is you have to say, I screwed up. Then you can find your mistake, then you can fix your mistake. And every year, a bunch of kids would wash out of the program, because they couldn't admit they made a mistake. And I always wondered what happened to those kids. And now I know what happened to those kids. They became city corporate counsel, and they became city administrator.
You have to stop now, Ezra. I'm sorry. You're done.
I'm not done.
Yes, you are. Please.
Let him finish. She told the truth. He didn't lie.
I didn't lie? I didn't accuse anybody of anything?
Ezra?
I'm talking about.
Ezra?
What?
You were being disrespectful.
How am I being disrespectful?
You were being disrespectful.
Look.
Your time is over. Your time is over. Your time is over.
No.
No.
Next, next, please. Thank you. Come forward.
My name's Julie Sarn. I'm, I believe I'm First Ward. I don't know, but my concern is Fairmont Cemetery. I talked to several people about the condition. I've dealt with it since two thousand seventeen. Some, some weeks it's, it looks okay. Most weeks, you got vault sitting out for people to see, surrounded in weeds. You got trees from the Doricio, Rico, or however you say it, still laying there, cut up, trees that have fallen. You can tell it, they're, they're dead. They've been dead for a long time, and they're still laying there. Grass, most times it's knee-high. Right now, it's about calf-high. I go up there, I've been going up there every day since Wednesday of last week. Nobody. Today, two people were up there cutting grass. I was told they do one section at a time. They rotate it. It's a cemetery. You can't rotate sections every once in a while. You have to do it all at one time. It's a big cemetery. I understand. Why ain't it, if that was my yard, I'd have a ticket. Or I'd have people down there doing my yard with a fine. Why isn't that being done at this cemetery? I don't know. I've been dealing with it. We went up there with groups and cut the grass. Not doing that no more. It's somebody's responsibility. That's all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next?
My name is Kelly Sidran, fifteen-oh-two Clay Street, Third Ward. A couple of things. One, I am here representing the New Quad City Tenant Alliance. This is a group that's being formed because something has to be done. Tenants, when they get together, have more strength than when they're separate. So we need to figure out what to do to make sure this never happens again, because the first meeting after this happened, I said I was going to make sure this didn't happen in my city again. I'm doing everything in my power to do so. Second of all, you guys have got to be tired, man. You guys have got to be tired of hearing this over and over and over again, week after week. I'm really sorry. But you know what? I'm tired, too. Craig Malin was fired for grading casino property. Three people have died, and no one's been fired. No one. This is unacceptable for my city. Thank you.
Next?
My name is LaShawna Dixon. I'll say it again, because I know I just hit the mic. My name is LaShawna Dixon. I am from the Fifth Ward. And I was so sorry to miss you all last week, you know? But I did get time to go over the meeting, and I just found it very sickening on how my city members, my, this is my, pretty much my family that we talk every day, come down here to address you all and kind of seemed like they were kind of let down and kind of threatened and wanted to be shut up. And I want to speak on that, but Ms. Julie's already got me, and I know I'm not supposed to name her. She mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. However, we could spend an hour and a half in the past two weeks arguing about windows on a historic property. But today, when there was a motion to hold something off, it was, oh, we can't do this. We can't do that. Hold it off for a week? What is holding it off for a week? The building is already gone. What, what, what else are you going to find out there? It's rubble. There's nothing left. So to hold it off for another week, if I'm understanding it correctly, to hold it off for another week to table it, is not hurting nothing, because there's nothing left out there. Y'all make sure y'all got the two, and I think you're going to send them, because we seen them on pallets, parts of the building to pit it, what, the historical blah, blah, blah thing? Y'all make sure y'all save that. Y'all make sure y'all save the innobles, but you didn't go and save my cousin. You didn't go and save Daniel. You didn't go and save Ryan. Like, come on now. And I, yeah, I'm here raising hell for last weekend, some of this week, too. And it, and I agree, we are almost tired, almost. But every time I hear some ignorant stuff, I, I have to come back up here and say something. We all know how that building fell. I'm not a rocket scientist. I have a high school degree. And there's pictures of that building the day before, and a phone call, letting you know that something looked like it was wrong to that wall, and then magically, the next day, the building goes down. Oh, we need to find out what happened. Well, you're kind of, by the pictures, you kind of see what happened, right? I've got a high school degree, and I could tell by the pictures and the video of the building collapsing, it was not supported. And you just let landlords, whatever, do whatever they want to do, decide they don't want to pay so much money to get something fixed properly. That's what happened. That's the truth. My name is LaShawna Dixon. Nice to have your time today. I know y'all really just don't care, some of you. And that's the sick part. I wish some of you well come November, because we are coming for seasons.
Jessica Knoll's Second Ward. Um, kind of like she, to talk off of what she said. I'm, I got a high school diploma. I'm a produce clerk. I know what happened. It was probably because the support beams in the basement weren't eye beams and weren't connected to the floor on that Pacific wall. That had been there like that for at least two months that I know of. Or the bricks falling? Well, that's common sense. If the bricks are falling, that means that wall is probably coming down, right? And then two, last week I listened to a council member. Oh, we just need to move forward and heal and this and that. This week I hear the same thing. But my question to every single one of you, what are you guys healing from? I got told by a council member that they got displaced. You have all your belongings. You have three meals a day, and you're in the comfort of a family member's house. How is that displaced? Where is that fair? You have people that lost family ashes that they will not get back. So for any one of you guys to say that it's just time to heal, you guys have no room to speak on it whatsoever, because you guys have not shown, even, how, how can I say this?
That you're even part of the human race, and that you guys have feelings too.
I'm Howard Bunch. I live in Bettendorf, but I'm also on the board of the Mississippi Valley Blues Society, and our office is at one-oh-two South Harrison in the Union Building. I put in a request a while back for CISP funds to help with our expenses for the Bixby Event on July twenty-ninth. And we're having three bands. The first band is blues and outreach to the community and all the people that will be there. Our second band is, plays rock and jazz. And the third band is a wonderful band that plays Santana tribute music. So if you could look at that CISP app application and perhaps consider some donation to help with our expenses. The Blues Society has budgeted sixteen thousand dollars for the bands and the sound and the other things that we need to put on an event. So any consideration would be helpful. And on a different note, I know you're all concerned and committed about the future of Davenport and what happened a while back. And I have every confidence that, that you'll take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Michael Ross, Second Ward. Want to talk about all these new construction. Why is there not a fence around that old job site? Today, I witnessed three people walking through the job site. Doesn't take rocket science to keep our community safe. Two of them were kids riding bikes. That site is not OSHA-approved. Steel rebar sticking up, open holes. I did see, after I called Public Works yesterday, some of the stuff is getting done. While over at that site today, I saw a city of Davenport truck. I just politely asked them, are you here for the all these construction that's being turned in? Nope, I'm with the pothole department. So I inquired, I said, what's being done with West Forty-third Street and Fairmont Road where there's sinkhole, where the slabs keep sinking? Well, we'll have the quarter drill figure it out. Meanwhile, taxpayer dollars keep cold patching that road. Why isn't West Forty-first Street and Hillendale Road fixed either? Same issue. I brought it up multiple times. Why isn't, I believe this address is now owned by the city, why isn't the sidewalk at forty-twenty-two Hillendale Road that the contractor caved in when they tore the, abandoned the house down? I've been speaking on it. I would really encourage somebody with the city to go look at the slabs ever have a V. It's a real safety hazard. Why isn't the shoulder at Hickory Grove Road in Fairmont in front of BP Gas Station? There's a major drop-off on the shoulder. Heatherton Drive, another big thorm in the city side. Why is there multiple buildings with fence, garbage, weeds, et cetera? There's also midway down, I didn't catch the address. I don't know what happened over the weekend there or whatever, but there's a boarding up window. Is there a resident in that? Is that being rented out? I've been addressing these issues, so it's on minutes. So when, if and when things do take a turn, the city has no recourse but to go back on minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all, I don't think many of y'all, oh, LaCona Dixon, Fifth Ward. I don't think many of y'all know that we are actually paying attention to what's happening in our community. But the light is showing, and we really are not qualified, but our eyes are wide open. Okay? So I know y'all don't think we're special enough, okay? But we are telling you guys what's going on. And y'all can come up here and be sparkly and flashy and sit up on these seats, but you need to go outside and look at what we looking at. Why are we up here wasting money? There are homeless people still here. I spoke about that a couple of weeks ago. What about affordable housing for people, but we gonna waste money on Andrew Wall's mistake, but we ain't helping the homeless in our city, our own people? What about that? Y'all wasting money. Oh, I forgot, y'all can't say that. We wasting money. We can sit here and talk an hour about windows, about the historic buildings, but in fact, we have someone that sits on the board, who is the owner of, who is the owner of the Davenport Historic Preservation LLC. So that means their pockets is lying when a building is historic. So pockets and hands is being greased. And we have homeless and needy people in our community. So, yeah, I know that's a lot. It's bubbling in the soul. That's all I had to say. Greasing palms and greasing pockets, it's over. Have a nice evening.
My name is Cassandra Russell, Third Ward, here, because, you know, this is becoming the norm. And for whatever reason, I don't understand how YouTubers can, they know the details of what's going on, but nobody else does. But first and foremost, all the people who voted yes, thank you for some transparency that's been going on. I mean, it can't be easy to literally just ponder and like, well, my friends are gonna, well, this is gonna happen. I thank you for some transparency, if that's all we're gonna get, you know. I appreciate the people who did vote yes to go ahead, get that out of here, you know. But elections is coming, and guess what? Last election only took eight hundred people to come and vote. Oh, I don't care if I gotta go out toward the door. Things are gonna change, because how, how, how dare you guys as a, as a whole unit, that's what you guys want to recall, a unit, just sit and just watch nothing happen. And I plainly heard councilmen say they were displaced, but they were comfortable. You can be comfortable and be displaced, but yet you didn't lose nobody. You didn't lose no animals. You didn't lose no loved one. You didn't lose no actions, but you're comfortable. I mean, that's, that's the difference between Davenport people and the people that sit on that board. You can be comfortable in your home, and you can be comfortable in your parents' basement or whatever, but you, you ain't got no home to go to if you was. But hey, eight hundred votes is what it took to get y'all in there. Let's see what happens in November, or whatever date that is. But I guarantee, I don't know the date, but I guarantee I'll be at them polls. I can guarantee them absentee ballots are gonna be filled. I can guarantee. Hey, we coming for that stop, but we coming for it. And guess what? We got y'all, Linda. We can take you out. And somebody about to lose their job. But it's totally fine. But I do want to thank the people that are transparent and able to voice their opinions and be realistic about stuff that is going on. But also, I also heard another councilman say, oh, I'm gonna pretend I'm not just, just giving a clear that you guys are out here, but I'm walking home. That's, that's crazy, that you could throw that in somebody else's face to deceased people? Walking on deceased people? Seriously? The disrespect, the, just, it's more than disrespectful, because as a, as a child, I used to get my butt handed to me. And guess what? That's the result of it. Look at...
My name's Dennis Platt. I'm a resident of the Sixth Ward. And I wanted to speak just for a minute today about the nature of what happened. I know there seems to be a perception that this is just a terrible, terrible train wreck. But, you know, this is not something that, that can be healed very quickly. But it's been going on for like three years that I know of, and probably longer than that. This is a slow-motion train wreck that hasn't stopped yet. You've got over fifty-five communities, big apartment complexes with all kinds of issues. And the city department knows about it, because they're, they have inspectors in there all the time. And clearly, these landlords, these out-of-state landlords, are not easy to work with, and they're not cooperative, and they're not helping. But I don't understand, as a city this size, why we don't have teeth? Why aren't we taking action? This should have been done three years ago, two years ago. Two years ago, we had a disaster on our hands. Nobody, nobody cared. Did the bare minimum to get by, get through it, move on. You have more stuff coming at you that you don't even realize. You have people that work for you that do know. They know exactly what kind of problems happen here in Davenport. You've got big buildings with disabled people in them, with elevators that don't work. If there was a fire drill, they couldn't even evacuate these buildings. There are several buildings that I know of that residents have told me, if anything happens, I'm screwed, because there's nobody here that will help me leave. This is the status quo. This is what you want to protect. It's insane. I think you need to publicly acknowledge you've got issues, systemic issues, that have been neglected, and you need to take active steps to resolve this. It's not easy, and it's not simple, and it's not going to be fast. But you can do this. I wish you'd honestly step up and do it. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I would make a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. All in favor? Sorry. We're adjourned.